So just before we go stir, I do have the daffodil pin on my suit jacket. And this is the month of cancer. I believe it's their daffodil sale. So just trying to tell the, just inform the residents of Charlestown that it's on. And the money that they raised for this, through this campaign is all for a good cause. So thanks for wearing your daffodils. Okay, approval of agenda. Vote by councillor Bernard, second by councillor Duffy, all those in favor? Okay, declarations of conflict of interest. I think I missed that, did I? Declarations of conflict of interest? You are in conflict?
Yeah, same as last month there. I believe it's resolution number two under planning, Your Worship.
And it's because you work with Mel.
Yeah.
Okay? All right? Okay. Okay, adoption of previous draft minutes. Regular meeting, March 8th, 2021. Special meetings open, March 8th, 10th, 22nd, 26th, April 7th, 2021. Public meeting and planning, March 23rd, 2021. It moved, okay. Okay, moved by councillor Revert, second by councillor Ramsey, all those in favor? Business arising. Over the minutes?
Seen none.
Seen none? Okay, moved by councillor Ramsey, second by councillor Yankoff. Good? All those in favor? Okay, so we're on to reports of committees. And 6.1, Planning Heritage, councillor Michael Duffy. Bishop?
I'm sorry. I was trying to be subtle.
Are you getting feedback?
Yeah.
Is that a little better?
No, it's loud right here, Your Worship.
Yeah, because there's a monitor in the park down.
Well, do they have to, do they have to have it that loud, I guess? I'm good.
Could we just ask them to turn it down? Yeah, can we just, please? We're just having some technical issues, so we're going to deal with them first, councillor Doran, so that we can have a smooth meeting. How you doing, Mr. Forbes?
Very good, thank you, Your Worship. Good.
Okay, do you want to try it there, councillor Duffy, see if that's all right?
Sure. Thank you, Your Worship. Good evening, council members. Planning Heritage Committee report is as follows. We had actually, all three aspects of our committee had worked this last weekend. We had a heritage review, we had a review committee, and we had our planning board. The heritage review concerned two applications for establishments on Fitzroy Street. While we had one application concerning the review board, which will be part of our resolutions tonight, where our councillor would like, if councillor would like the review board material to be forwarded to a public meeting for input. As far as the planning issues, we have five issues to deal with tonight, five resolutions. The first one is, has to do with 25 Pommel Street. It's converting a four-unit apartment building into a five-unit apartment building, which requires, I believe, approximately 65-foot variance or a 65-foot frontage on the front of a lot. The applicant only has 40 feet, so she is asking for 25-foot variance in order to provide a fifth rental unit into one that's presently a four-unit. So I'll leave that with that. Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. ... Any questions first, before we go on to the resolutions? Councillor Twill?
Thank you for your report. I'd just like to request, and all staff's going to have to look into it, with all the constructions taking place over the last couple of years, apartment buildings, housing and whatnot, can we get some kind of an accurate picture, I guess, of where we're at in terms of apartments and buildings, condominiums have been built, single-family dwelling. We often hear that there's a shortage. I'm not so sure there's a shortage anymore, but it's like that, and that's all. So just, I think it'd be good for all of us to have a look at that. So we, when people are talking about, and giving their perspective as to what the housing status is in our city, maybe we could have an active description. And then councillor Duffy, maybe release that to the public.
Yes. Mr. Forbes, is that possible? Do we have one that's fairly up to date in that regard, or do we need to update what we do have?
I'm sure, I'm sure we could come up with a figure, but what you need to do, though, is you need to, it's not only one number, you need two numbers. You need to know how many you're bringing into the market, but you also need to know where does that relation to meeting demand? So there is, there is a study underway that's being prepared by Cornwall, Stratford, Charlestown and the province. I think that's going to be available, this comprehensive study, to give all of those indications of where we, where we're resolving things in the existing marketplace in each of those communities, and how much demand they're predicting for the next five, 10, 15 years to meet all of those housing market segments, whether it's single-family dwellings, apartments, townhouses. So we can't come up with a figure in regard to where we are as of today, but that figure by itself, it's just, you need to know, again, but what is that in relation to? How, how much traction are we getting in the marketplace? How much more demand is out there is really what we need to do.
Has to be robust.
Right, exactly. And there still is a lot of demand out there. They cannot, like, the permits that are coming through just for single-family dwellings. We brought Ira Revert back just to help us out, and Ira, you know, Ira's been here for a lot of years, and can't believe the amount of, just on single-family dwellings that he signed off in the last couple of weeks that Ira's been back.
Councillor Twill, so, Michael, councillor Duffy, did you want to respond?
No, I'm just going to say to councillor Twill is that we'll start with that four-party group with their report and adapt it or revise it according to our needs.
Just a follow-up question, sir.
Thank you, Chair Duffy, and thank you, Alex. I know what you're saying about the demand, and I understand the demand. I wonder, in terms of infrastructure, I mean, housing and the demand in housing, but the demand that it also puts on our infrastructure, like, for example, water and sewer, roads and transportation, or police department, or fire department. You're right, you can't look at, you know, how many are being built and look at a number, you have to look at what the demand is. But I think you have to expand the equation. I want to talk about the equation, transportation, infrastructure, whether it's on ground, below or above ground. I mean, it might be time now to, for the city to look at some kind of a feasibility study, as to where we're at, because we always seem to be, all come a bunch of time where everyone's lobbying for their own respective district, and I understand that. We have residents in the community who are saying, you're not doing enough for, for example, let's say pedestrian traffic, or safety, crosswalks, and infrastructure, that nature. So it's great that we're doing all this, but I just wondered where we're at in terms of the other services that the city provides. And I believe now's the time to do that comprehensive study, a feasibility study, if you will. So it will give us a projection as, you know, maybe the next five, 10, the next 15 years. I think it'd be advantageous for us to have that information. And again, when the information is brought in, maybe the chair can share that with our community.
Sure. We can do that, Your Worship. Mr. Forbes, did you want to respond?
Yeah, Your Worship, look, in tandem with the affordable housing study that's being prepared, somewhat facilitated through our department, there is a road management study being prepared by the city, which endures with all of those public issues. So Mr. Adams, if you so desire, you can ask Mr. Adams a piece up later in the regard to, that, that report, I think, is fairly close to being completed. That's dealing with all of those significant items that councillor Twill has alluded to. What are we going to need for infrastructure? And again, the population projections are built into that request as well, so.
Yeah, councillor Twill, there's just other questions. Councillor Yankoff, there's a number, councillor Yankoff?
Well, if we moved on today to Pommel Street, then I have a question.
Okay, this is just, just answered to the report?
If he's not finished with his.
I just have others waiting in the queue. Councillor Bernard, and then councillor Ramsey, then back to councillor Twill. Councillor Bernard?
Yeah, just one big comment on the housing. My understanding is, last time I heard, the rate was around 2%, vacancy rate, 2.2%, is that correct? Do you think the minimum they'd like to see is 5%? Because that, that to me would be the driving room. Here it says, there's a lot of demand up there, but still not to where we'd have to be to have the house that we need.
Councillor Eric, what do you think? Just, no, just let him finish. Hold on, can we just keep going? Councillor Ramsey, and then we'll come back to you, councillor Twill.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, councillor Duffy and Alex. This has nothing to do with this amendment. I just wondered, I'm getting some phone calls. Alex, is there any bylaw or anything, a few other councillors are getting into, I heard, that somebody would sell another one, a single property, and then all of a sudden, it's filled with eight to 10 people in it, that are not family members or any of that. I got one last Friday, some people were very upset, because their former neighbors were fantastic people, and then all of a sudden they sell the property, and this new owner come in, and now there's, so they share a driveway, now there's six more cars on that driveway, and he can't get in sometimes, and there's eight people there, which are not related, because they even talked to them and said they're all family, and they said, no, we're not. So I just wondered, is there a bylaw, or, like, can anybody just go buy a house and just load her up?
There is a maximum amount of unrelated people that are allowed to be in a single, detached dwelling. In the, in the past, there was a lot more definitions in all zoning bylaws, dealing with the definitions of families and things like that. You can't, you can't zone by families anymore. Families is a complicated term. But we do have a zoning bylaw for a maximum, and I think, councillor Revert and I've worked on this one as well, I think it's a maximum of eight unrelated people allowed in a single-family dwelling. Now, that's, the issue is not necessarily the amount of people in the unit, but to your point, it's the amount of cars that come with the people that are in the unit, if they're all unrelated, and they all have their own private vehicle. So there may be ways that we can get at where they're parking on the property, there's certain places you're allowed to park on property, but, but we're no different in regard to the maximum number of people that you're allowed to have in a single-family dwelling, unrelated.
And that's eight, is it?
If that is eight, I should check that, but I'm pretty confident, I think it's a maximum of eight.
So those, like, in summary, just follow up, Your Worship. Like, I can sell my bungalow and have it rented out to eight people?
Correct, yeah, unrelated, yeah. And then there's other provisions in there. You can, you can rent, I think, up to four people, a family can relate, then they're moving to the category of boarders, so, you know, but there's no, a family is not defined by any number. You can have 10 children.
Right.
If they're, if they're your children or your family, then you can also consider having boarders. So there's a number of different provisions, but it's all calculated in the zoning bylaw.
So a lot of these R1 homes, they're almost as, as boarding houses right now?
Well, there is a definition of boarding house, and it's a lot more further than that eighth, and you go up, then you're into beyond the eighth, I think, and then you're up to 15, eight to 15, so.
Just one last.
Go ahead.
And the only thing is, is that it's hard on the neighbors that's been there forever and, and all this stuff, and then all of a sudden, this happened to them, of all neighbors, and you can't do anything about it. So our hands are tied, and I'm just trying to get an answer to the back of this residence, you know, and just see what is the story, if it's legal or it's not legal, I guess.
It's legal, right? It is presently legal, and it's, you know, again, we, I never say never, we can always review things, but it's really hard to pull those numbers down, because then you're moving, and what is your rationale for pulling those numbers down, particularly when you can have 10 or 12 kids in a house? But you're only allowed six unrelated people in a house. It all needs to relate to land use planning. And again, there may be other things we can do. I do realize that parking in the front yard is a problem, the whole front yard. You're only supposed to be parking in 40% of the frontage of your property. So I guess a 60-foot lot, 24-foot wide driveway should be the maximum. So there's other ways that those things can be possibly minimized, but the number of people is a hard one to, we follow what most, most other municipalities have followed in that regard. Thank you, Your Worship.
Councillor Duffy, you want to follow up?
Yes, Your Worship, could we get back to the agenda? All these are good questions, and they're, they're all, you know, relevant and that sort of thing, but, but, look, we're going to be here to.
I understand.
Can we not stick to the agenda and move on? I'm not minimizing the questions being asked, I'm just saying, we have other business planned on the agenda.
I'm just going to wrap it up with a couple of people that are in the queue. Councillor Revert, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship.
It's Twill, Bernard, and then you. Finish up there, councillor Twill. You wanted to follow up?
Yes.
You just stand up, thank you.
In this comprehensive study or exercise that I allude to, I think we, I strongly recommend we need to include our fire services and our police services. We know that we're 17 police officers under the national standard, we're under that seal. So I think we need to look at all, all the services that we provide our city to make sure that, you know, if we're welcoming more people, which we want to, more people to our city and to our problems, that the infrastructure is in place. Because we're not, then that's where, that's where, you know, serious issues start to arise, because we don't have the resources in place. I'll leave it at that for now, and look forward to the findings.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, sir. Councillor Bernard, and then councillor Revert. You're okay? Councillor Revert?
Thank you, Your Worship. Actually, it's just councillor Twill's comment, it's actually 17, it's 17 regional that we're under, and five nationally.
Okay, thank you.
It's actually the opposite, but, that's okay. Councillor Duffy, I mean, this isn't the time to discuss planning issues right now, so if there, I know it's not on the agenda, but it is a topic that, that needs to be addressed. And I agree with councillor Ramsey, I've had numerous calls on this subject with people living, a number of people living in the residence that, that, you know, are not part of one family. I get the whole notion of family, I understand that, but it goes beyond that. It's, it's care for property. As an owner of a home in Charlestown, people take great care of their properties. The problem is, is when you have, when you have eight different people renting a house, there, there seems to be a lack of care and respect for current neighborhood and neighbors, and that, and that is a problem that we need to address in some capacity in existing areas. Because again, we talked about the accessory apartments, that's something we brought forward to legalize, you know, further density. Problem is, if you don't get your accessory apartment approved, it doesn't matter, because you can just rent out anyways. So to me, it almost, it almost defeats the purpose, because we did the accessory apartment bylaw to allow for legal densification of neighborhoods, but you didn't, you don't need to use it, because you can densify your home, eight people, different people, without having any repercussions. So why would anybody go through the process of getting an accessory apartment? Do you know what I mean? Just, I think we need to look at it, that's all.
Yeah, and I think these are good points that have been raised, and that we'll follow up the next planning and development standing committee. Do I go with the first resolution, or councillor Duffy?
Yes, we have.
First resolution?
Cali has it.
She's going to read the resolution first.
Oh, yeah.
You ready?
On the resolution, or is it another question?
You want to read the resolution, then, she's going to talk.
Councillor, moved by councillor Duffy, second by councillor McCabe, about the request for major bearings to reduce the minimum required lot frontage from 65.6 feet to no less than 40 feet for 25 Pommel Street, PID 335588, in order to prevent the conversion of a vacant, a former commercial space on the ground floor to a residential dwelling unit, resulting in a total of five dwelling units to be approved, subject to the attached conditions.
Okay, so, on the floor, councillor Yankoff, you'd like to, like to speak to it?
I'd like to speak to it.
Thank you.
This is in my ward, so I just, I missed the training meeting on Monday, and I'm just wondering if I could just put perhaps a small friendly amendment to the resolution to remove number, the condition to number four, after several discussions with our manager of public works. It doesn't really pertain. The developer has been in many conversations with the manager of public works, and they are finding a workaround so that all of these parking spots that had been there for more than 80 years can stay, so that they can continue on with the fifth unit. However, we could do two options, we can remove it altogether, or we could certainly amend it to state that in order for the developer to get their occupancy permit, that they will get it under the direction and sign off of public works, so that it's still being done properly. It's just that this right now does not say what's actually happening. She's giving an approach in order, there's a lot of things happening that this is misleading, and this is not what is going to happen. So I'm just looking for a friendly amendment on that, if.
So you need a second for the friendly amendment? Second it? Okay, councillor Bernard is second. So the friendly amendments on the floor. Is Mr. Adams on, there, Mr. Adams? Scott?
Yes, I'm here.
Did you, did you want to add any, any, anything to the discussion?
No, I think councillor Yankoff covered it. We have spoken to the developer, it looks like we'll come to a, everyone will be satisfied, satisfied with the final results.
So what's the friendly, could you repeat the friendly amendment?
My first option would be we just remove number four, but I see Mr. Forbes is harassing over there, like he wants to say something about that.
He is, he's something.
And what he will say, just.
I think I have a friendly amendment.
Yeah, right, and I'm sure you do, because you're the Jedi, I'm just a storm.
Yeah, no, no, no.
As long as it reflects that, that it's public works that will have those final conversations with the developer to ensure that all components of public works concerns are covered, but not the way it reads right now.
Mr. Forbes, did you want to clarify?
Sure, so I've, I just did, got a little scribbling here, so I wonder, four, existing asphalt parking located within the public right-of-way between the subway property's east limit and the Palm Street public sidewalk be reviewed and approved by the manager of public works.
Is that correct? Is that all right with you?
That's right.
Did you get that down, Mr. Kelly?
Thank you.
Over here, Your Worship. Is that down? Okay, councillor Bernard?
Yeah, I was just going to say, although it says it's four going through five, this was always four units, and it was a store, it was a bakery, it was a business in that particular section of the building. So, and the parking was, as the councillor and Yankoff just said, it's probably there. That's why I had some problems second amendment.
And it's got historical significance, it's, it has historical significance, it's where the Phillips Lund, where it took place, Mr. Trainor.
I understand that, but.
Remember that?
Yeah.
I remember, yeah. 1941, that's where the Trainor Meat Store was, that Phillips and Lunds were accused of murdering, back in 1941 or 42.
That certainly would help. That certainly helps with her trying to murder.
That's like drinking the green joke, that cool out. Okay, can we read it? All of them? Questions called?
Questions called.
All of those in favor, please raise your hands. Councillor MacLeod, yea or nay?
In favor.
10-0, carried. Do you want to read? Oh, please, sir. Thank you. So just note in the minutes that deputy has left the room. So the second resolution, there it is.
Your Worship, moved by councillor Duffy, second by councillor Yankoff, that's a request to amend Appendix G of the zoning, sorry, zoning map of, of the zoning and development bylaw for Angus Drive, Lot 40, PID 419143, from a single detached residential, large R1L zone to a mixed-use corridor MUC zone, and 413 St. Peters Road, PID 419135, from low-density residential, or two-zone, to the mixed-use corridor MUC zone. And to amend Appendix A of the future land use map of the official plan map for Angus Drive, Lot 40, PID 419143, and 413 St. Peters Road, PID 419135, from a Troy neighborhood to Village Center Commercial. And further, to consolidate Angus Drive, Lot 40, PID 419143, and 413 St. Peters Road, PID 419135, and St. Peters, 419, sorry, St. Peters Road, PID 192187. In order to facilitate road upgrades by the province to St. Peters Road, and to construct a second means of access for the convenience store to and from Angus Drive, be approved, subject to a development agreement, Your Worship.
Motion on the floor? Discussion? Councillor Twill?
Thank you. As we all know, we had a public meeting at Ross Royalty back a few weeks ago, and certainly from a predictability perspective, it was crystal clear, Yone was in favor, of course, other than the business owner, Mr. Kaisen. Now, I'd like to say at the outset, I think, you know, he's one of the, he's a great businessman, hires a lot of people, got a good prop, good staff, and, you know, we're thankful that we have business leaders like that in our community. However, what we're faced with here again is post-Randabout, it's going to be constructed, St. Peters Road and Angus, and changes zoning of three particular properties. And the impact and effect of that is, while it might aid, something called safe access to and from Mel's from Angus Drive, but what it does is, it changes the whole complexion, the whole complexion of Angus Drive. Angus Drive, for the last 50 years, has been a neighborhood street with, again, predictability of traffic that only people live in that neighborhood, that community, would utilize. So we're being asked to change that whole, the whole dimension, the whole dynamic of Angus Drive, and with all due respect, I don't think that's fair. It's not fair. And the residents, once again, you know, have showed up to a, a public meeting and expressed their concerns and their rejection to the fact that they are not in favor. And, Mr. Mayor, I would like to read just a couple of paragraphs of the city council, because I think it's very important. This letter, emails express my objection to the latest proposal of rezoning and consolidating three lots, Lot 40. three lots, Lot Forty, Angus Drive, Four-Thirteen St. Peters Road, Four-Nineteen St. Peters Road, and also lot consolidations, PIT number four-one-nine-one-four-three, PIT number four-one-nine-one-three-five, and PIT number one-nine-two-one-eight-seven, bordering on the northeast corner of St. Peters Road and Angus Drive, for the sole purpose of creating an entrance and exit road to an extremely busy convenience store. I do recognize the high volume traffic on St. Peters Road, especially within the vicinity of Mel's, and some steps need to be taken to make this a safer area with a smoother flow of vehicle traffic. However, I object strongly to any proposed solution that would permit heavy traffic directed onto Angus Drive. An alternative suggestion might be to utilize three hundred feet frontage approximately from Four-Thirteen St. Peters Road, Four-Nineteen St. Peters Road Mel's, to construct the entrance and exit, not on Angus Drive. Homeowners like ourselves, who have lived in a single detached residential, in our cases for almost fifty years, zoned area, should have every reasonable expectation that any use of property in close proximity would not change to rezoning with such a detriment to our property. I hope the planners, designers will look forward at this proposed design and find a different solution. I'm asking for your support. Sincerely, Florence and Paul Lagano. At the meeting as well, we had the engineers from the provincial government, and they talked briefly about some projections. I asked a question, Al Nakin, about projections on Angus Drive, he gave a short brief, no real data, no real analytics, and it's all well and good to say, you know, we're, we're going to entertain this. Well, I'll do respect, I, I don't even think our work is complete because of no traffic study on Angus Drive, there's no traffic study at all. So, with all, with all of those issues that I mentioned, it's not the first time this has been here. I would like to recommend that, that the province, the provincial government, as opposed to, you know, the construction of all these roundabouts up and down St. Peters Road, City of Charlestown, and, and Mr. Kaiser, sit down and maybe look at an alternative site, obviously being compensated, to, to see what can be done, maybe create a win-win, as opposed to what, once again, putting business in direct counter to, to, to the residents, lifelong residents. I'll, I'll not be supporting this, again, with due respect to the developers, but, but, you know, what my heart and soul is, is with the, with the residents, I've known these people all my life, their concerns are not only legitimate and valid, they're extremely important, the quality of life that they've experienced for the last fifty years, and I don't believe in any which way, shape, or form, that that should be compromised.
Thank you very much, Counsel Twill.
Thank you.
Counsel Bernard?
Chair, second.
And then you're after? Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you, Worship. Worship, I, I can understand the owner of the store, I can understand why he'd like to have another entrance or exit, and who in the business, whenever they're doing these roundabouts on these busy highways, putting, and we've seen this on Riverside Drive, we've seen this out in the legislature. For me, I guess, when you look at the diagram, and you realize how big these roundabouts are, and you look at the splitter aisle, it's hard to visualize, if you look at the picture, how far up Angus Drive that would be going. It goes up quite a ways, but when you take the splitter aisle into consideration. And then when you look at the diagram from the vehicles leaving, potential exit, leaving Mel's, you're, you're up half, almost halfway on the residential street. Now, over time, and each road is exploding right now, there's growth going on everywhere. So, it's going to be a lot more traffic using the neighborhood streets coming, and to the front. I'm particularly kind of concerned for the amount of kids, whether they're on their bikes, or whether they're playing in the residential streets, and what they're working. We've all complained in here about speeding on our streets, we don't have enough kids protected on our streets. This can somewhat direct more traffic onto the residential streets, is what I don't want to see. So, to me, it's not a big deal, you went to the roundabouts, and stay on the side which is designed for safety, and you can come in on the right, and you exit on the right, and you stay away from Angus Drive. Certainly, if anyone, anyone wants to get on Angus Drive, I don't think you want this, all this traffic going in there. This, this is all traffic, this is your delivery trucks, this is, you know, everything that's going to come in and out of there. And you want that, a lot of kids on the streets that, you know, we raised, that are familiar with kids, not us, so I, I, Worship, hold this for you.
Counsel McCabe? Thank you, Counsel Bernard.
Thank you. And I don't have to be inundated, because both Counsel Twill and Counsel Bernard did a good job to bring up the points that are in your package, that you'll see in the minutes that I already addressed at our planning board meeting last Monday. We talk about increased traffic, and I know that the province is saying this is for safety, but the increased traffic coming from the north into Mel's, through these small streets and the residential streets, are going to be impacted, there is no question about that. It's interesting that Counsel Bernard just talked about the roundabouts on Riverside Drive, I did address that, and my response at that point was, there's a different standard than what's required for East Royalty in the minute. So, I'm not quite sure why the standard would be different for Riverside Drive than it would be for residents in East Royalty. Maybe that's a question we need to look at. The truck traffic definitely is a concern, we received an email today to say that it is not intended for truck traffic to use the entrance exit on to Angus Drive. Not intended, doesn't give me a lot of confidence. It's not intended that trucks use Wayman Street, I learned today, but they still drive Wayman Street, so I'm not sure who's going to control that access, because for convenience, those Mel's is tight, it's, it's, it's a tight spot, and there are, there's a lot of deliveries that go into Mel's. We talked about rezoning these properties to commercial, because we need to be able to have them zoned commercial as they cross the, to go into a commercial property. But, the other point to that is, once these are zoned commercial, it's an ad of right expansion, or opportunity for further business. Again, that would be with no more need to come back to council for any kind of direction other than, is it going to increase traffic, or is it not going to increase traffic? Traffic is definitely concerning in this area, for sure. My last point was, you know, the number of times this has been in front of council, I think my response was, there was a few deferrals, but there's been six different times it's been here, waiting for this roundabout on Angus Drive. It's, it doesn't fit, it's not fair, it's not what my residents want, and again, I won't be supporting this.
Counsel Yankov, I know Counsel Bernard was first, and then you're right after.
Then council will invite you over.
No, no, and then right after. Thank you for that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Worship. Thank you, Counsel Duffy. I do, I, a lot of good points made, and, and for me, you know, there is a safety report, as Counsel Bernard said, that the roundabout does offer a safer, safer mode transportation through that area. It's, it's really the, the road onto Angus is causing the problem, so, so at the very least, if we're not going to kill it, to defer it, to go back and have a chat, I guess one of the solutions that I would ask, and it was a solution that was proposed someday, was in a conversation down at Queens, Queens Arms, where we talked about how that intersection's really bad, the roundabout ever went in, we talked about five exit points, right, you'd have your North River, you'd have your Capital Drive, you'd have your other Capital Drive, and then you'd have Lower Mallback. But then they're, they're proposing maybe potentially exits on the McDonald's itself. So, this one here, why not have an exit off the roundabout that goes directly in Mel's, and exits directly back to the roundabout, as a possible solution, as opposed to putting it into the street? So, it is doable, we've seen, we've seen the five exits in North River, it, it does work. And that, that would be my proposal, so again, if, if council has the appetite to defer it, to go back and see if this is even an option, then I would certainly put a deferral on the floor, but I can't support what's being proposed tonight, so, I'll, I'll put a deferral on the floor, and then talk about other options, and if I can support there or not, then I'll be speaking this.
So, there's a deferral, a motion to defer the, the resolution? Got a second, or?
I'll second, Mark.
Okay, so we have to speak to the deferral? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Just to build on what a few of the counselors said, specifically with Counsel Bernard just now, with putting on a motion to defer, his, his example of an idea that might be an opportunity to be able to have a win-win for everybody, might be the opportunity to why we should take it back for a deferral and have further conversation. And this doesn't mean maybe just in a month, maybe it takes us a few months to get this right, because if we just squash it right now, then, then that's the end of the conversation. But just to keep our, keep our minds open a little bit, there's one example there, I'm sure we can all come up with some other examples, and, yeah, so, which is why I would second that, and it would be, also, at last Monday's meeting, again, I wasn't there, Counsel Twill wasn't there, and his lawyer wasn't there, so I can't, so I can't help but wonder if more conversation wouldn't have happened if more of the counselors were there, with all due respect to the planning board itself, so, for that reason, I would happily second that motion.
Furl's on the floor, so I just have, Counsel Bernard, did you just want to follow up?
Yes, Worship. Just, just one more thing I wanted to, to address quickly. I know Counsel McCabe talked about these rezoning that they're looking for commercial. We had something similar to this up at the top of St. Peters Road not too long ago, where the needs, remember the, there was, there was the street they want to take on?
Rolland Avenue.
Correct. And I think we rezoned the property, they wanted it commercial, I think we rezoned the parking, because it's the least intense type zoning, and it doesn't allow for a lot of building, but we get, I think, rezoned the parking, which allowed the road from Rolland through. I don't think it has to be commercial, if that is the, you know, I still don't think it solves that, I'm just saying the roundabout rezoning piece, I don't think it has to be commercial.
Counsel McCabe, and then Counsel Twill.
Thank you, I'm just going back into our notes that we had after planning board, because I also asked that question about a possible deferral, and I'm going to speak for you, because it's your quote here, Mr. Forbes, that you can clarify, that you explained because it's a provincial designation route, and the province is now in the process of trying to build ground for May first, correct, or around that time, that we can't, we really can't defer this application, that it needs to, because I did request that at planning board, and it was told that, no, we had to make a decision. And again, I've had a lot of residents that are really stressed for the last month or so, waiting for, for this, so for me, I obviously...
So, can we get Mr. Forbes to speak to it? Mr. Forbes?
So, on the issue of traffic, I mean, I hate getting caught in these traffic discussions, but the province, and I hate speaking for them as well, but to my knowledge, the tender is out for, for the traffic circle, so there's two things going on, there's the traffic circle, and then there's the access to Angus. Again, because I'm not the province, and I don't want to be the authority on that, but they may continue to build the, build the, the roundabout, they may not get the access, but I, I think the province is prepared to move forward. If that doesn't happen, I think they're going to move forward just on the roundabout, but I would prefer that they comment on that, if they defer, I'll concur, I'll, I'll get their direction on that, but I think that that's part of the discussion that's going on. So, I was just alluding to if, if that component is going to be done on the access to Angus, the province is looking for some, to see whether that's going to happen, or whatever configuration or design they can do to include that, but I think, and I hate speaking on their behalf, but I think they're moving forward, they'll, they'll be around it up there, it's one way or the other.
So, Counsel Twill, Counsel Ramsey, then Counsel Bernard. Counsel Twill?
Thank you, I appreciate the motivation and the referral, I can't understand what's motivating you to propose the deferral. However, what we're being asked tonight is to change the zoning of three properties, so I think the exploration, or the, you know, further, further opportunities or options that exist with the roundabout, I think that can continue on, but we need to send a clear and verbal message to the residents, and some that are here tonight, that as far as any type of traffic, vehicle traffic, service trucks, whatever the case may be, will not interfere, compete, will not increase on Angus Drive. So, let's deal with that issue first, right? And then, our manager of planning, our manager of public works, can talk to our, the engineers or counterparts with the problems, and they can knock themselves out when it comes to looking at other options and other, other opportunities with, with the, at the proposed roundabout, as long, as long as it does have any impact and effect whatsoever with the residents on Angus Drive. Residents of Angus Drive want an answer tonight, believe me, they want an answer tonight.
Okay.
They're not interested in, in delaying this, or exploring, anything else, they want the, they want a decision on the three proposed changes to the zoning of those properties. So, let's send a non-critical, clear message to the residents that are listening.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Counsel Ramsey?
Thank you, Worship, and as is on, oh, I wasn't at the planning meeting, or, or it was a public meeting, but I was reading up on this, and I have a little foggy sometimes with the whole thing, but I don't mind the roundabouts going out, and I think, I don't think anybody in this room does, because we know the roundabouts are going to be going there. But I still have a problem with the access on Angus Drive, because none of us, as Counsel Bernard stated, and Counsel Twill, and Counsel McCabe, would like, would not like to see that in our own neighborhood, and all that, and I still think it's a, they're talking safety, but that's what the roundabout's supposed to help a little bit, and people's just going to sort of have to adapt with that new roundabout, like we did in, before we get to it, the, the other one at the end of St. Peters Road there, where the lights are here, and over there, and all that stuff. I mean, now the problem is it's getting in the board for that. But, but the only thing that I don't, I can't, I can't support it as long as it's going to be an access to Angus Drive, is we have to start looking at the residents. Thank you, sir.
Counsel, Counsel Bernard, then Counsel McCabe, did you have your hand up, Counsel McCabe? Nope. Counsel Bernard? So, after Counsel Bernard?
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to follow up on Counsel Twill's comments, saying that, that you're right, we are dealing with the rezoning, I agree. The thing is though, is that we are going to go back and allow for the potential of a fifth exit coming through that property. By, by killing the rezoning, they won't even give an option to talk it. So, they still, they still need an opportunity, if they're going to put that through, that road, the fifth exit I'm talking about, as a possible solution, they would still need to kill the rezoning, then, then you're right, it's, they can't do any of the property for one year. So, from a, from a point of collaboration, and trying to work with, to find a solution, you'd have to, you'd have to just defer the whole thing, and see if they do, if that's the outcome, councils are in, to be able to put that extra exit, that's all.
Counsel Duffy?
Thank you, Worship, just a few comments. I, I think we're losing sight of the fact that, what this is all about, this is about safety, it's a very busy spot up there, and what they're trying to do is take as much traffic off of directly going on to St. Peters Road and off of St. Peter's Road. When it comes to Angus Drive, I've been out there quite a bit, I mean quite a bit. We were talking, we heard earlier about the, what I call the spur road, which is the, the anticipated new road that would be off of Angus into the parking lot of, of Mel's. That, that, if you, if you look at the map, there's, there's a, a lot on the corner with a house on it, and then there's an empty lot, and it's that empty lot that is, was going to, or is going to accommodate what I call the little spur road. So, I, I take their seventy-five foot frontages, so if you have kind of a lot and a half, that would take us about a hundred and twenty-five, or a hundred and eighteen feet onto Angus Drive. A hundred and eighteen feet, which is, who can do the fastest math, about thirty yards, thirty-six yards, or whatever, up Angus Drive, before you get to the spur road, because it's half of the, the lot, so, it's not going the full, I, I fail to see yet how this arrangement would increase traffic on Angus Drive. We'd still have people coming to the store, they would only be coming to the store, some of the people coming off there would be going to the store, they would dirt down the, the new road, or if they're coming to town, they get themselves down onto the roundabout. I don't understand it. As far as the truck traffic, the, the merchant has already told us that he doesn't plan to have any truck traffic coming down Angus, it comes in off of St. Peters Road today, so why would it change? And simply, I mean, I think we control our residential streets, we don't control St. Peters Road, no trucks allowed to have a signage on it and enforced, kind of stop the trucks, I think, but I'm not sure in that regard. I'd like to talk just for a couple of seconds on the fact that we have to bring it back into some reality, you better be careful, as the saying goes, be careful what you ask for, because if those people that don't want this setup are successful, what are we left with? Are we left with a roundabout and a median, where people coming from Charlestown saying, heading home to stand-up, are going to have to go up to Merkison, go around the roundabout up there, and then come back towards Charlestown to turn right into Mel's, and coming out of Mel's, have to go back down to the Angus, or Angus Turnpike, and go back up to be on the way to stand-up? Like, somebody is going... Like, somebody is going to say, whoever allowed this to happen? So, and as we were told at the public meeting, there are cases on winter days when people are heading home to get home ahead of the storm or during the storm, they pull over to the right, because they don't want to navigate the left-hand turn into Mills, and the same coming out of Mills. So, and then they dash across Ford Road. It's a safety concern all the way around. And there's another possibility, maybe, and Mr. Forbes and I discussed this briefly this morning, is like, there's nothing that compels the province to do anything at this corner. Maybe they'll say, okay, if that bunch at City Hall just can't see that this is a safety factor, maybe we'll take our development money, our infrastructure money in regards to this issue, and take it to Muskosh or whatever. I mean, we keep horsing around with this. We may be, in four years' time, be in the same boat we are tonight. So I think I will be supporting. And the last one, in regards to touching down, is the fact that we, at our public meeting, we had six individuals speak from five households. In addition, I think we had maybe three or four letters that were not in support, but they did not attend, and that's fine, the public meeting. But you have to understand, there's 5,000, 1,500 households in that ward out there, Ward Nine, and five households took the time to come to speak. So what are the 1,495 households thinking on this issue? They're either all for it, the improvement or the change, or they just didn't have the time to come and explain. Tell us their thoughts. That's all I had on this.
Counselor McCabe?
Thank you. I just want to clarify is that, you know, the roundabouts going up and going back, there's going to be many houses along St. Peter's Highway, they're going to have to navigate those roundabouts in order to change direction, because there's people that live along St. Peter's Highway that aren't just going to be able to pull out anymore like they used to. So there's going to be a lot of people maneuvering those roundabouts in order to navigate direction, depending which way you want to go. And there might have been, I mean, it's a fairly thick package of people that have emailed us to let us know that they're not in support, and I do represent the people there. There's been numerous conversations with residents that are not in favor of this proposed application. As for the idea of rezoning all three properties commercial, that probably wouldn't have to happen if we were looking at just rezoning one parcel. So maybe that's the way that they can bring a new application back that's a little different than what's existing right now. Those are just my thoughts. Thank you.
Counselor Bernard, then Counselor Yankoff.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to touch on again what Counselor Duffy said, not that far up Angus Drive, I think you have to take, when you look at Angus Drive today, the first house on the corner of Angus and St. Peter's is gone. The roundabout's going to be built right over the top of that, that's one of the moving houses. You're already up Angus Drive. Now, so if you go from Angus, where St. Peter's Road we take now, up to Short Street, which is at the top of the hill, by the time this proposal goes through, so your first house is gone, that's part of the roundabout. And what I'm saying here, you've got your splitter islands committed, and that's why in a diagram, coming off the drive, you went on to Angus on an angle, because you have to go on an angle to get by those splitter islands. Now you're almost halfway between where we know Angus now meets St. Peter's Road to Short Street, and the new development where you're going to be coming out, you're almost halfway up to Short Street. When you look at that new development, so to me, you're getting into a neighborhood, you're approaching a neighborhood, quite far. And the other thing, to me, you still say no, because then Counselor Verne just said that this street they put in for the needs, or to be able to get on the St. Peter's Road, didn't need the commercial zone. So, you know, if this, if you say no to this at the end of that, it's not like if there's another option, you're talking about, it's not like you still can't come back with that, because we're not going on Angus Drive if there is another option. They don't need this on the commercial, you know, the ground.
Are they zoning MUC, right? Multi-use corridor? Who else?
But the other thing that I talked about, Yours, is that East Row is always to be as a better community, and, you know, some of the concern I could see is, how much commercial spread are we going to see on St. Peter's Road? So I mean, you've got a vacant lot here now, that Counselor McCabe already talked about. It's not to say you can't buy the other way. So to me, and I know that there's some talks, and we'll be talking in the future, whether possibly there's some land in East Row for a commercial or not, but one of the concerns is how much commercial do we want along St. Peter's Road? And I think right now, we're talking safety, isn't it? For me, it's the neighborhood, it's the neighborhood key, it's everybody in the neighborhood street, which I wouldn't want a whole lot of commercial traffic out of. But I think the other question needs to be, as we know, East Row is just moving, just coming along all the way.
Oh, yeah.
So if you want to have commercial along St. Peter's Road, hopefully not. So, thank you.
Counselor Duffey, it's Counselor Yankoff. Go ahead, there, Counselor Yankoff.
Thank you. Just again, just to build on everybody's conversation about this, it sounds like, I mean, not to speak for anyone else here, but it sounds to me like a lot of us are not in support of any additional traffic from the highway going on with Angus. So to build on the deferral resolution, I see that as an opportunity that we can have those further discussions, and when it does eventually come back to council, I mean, this not being an option, but so many other options. I mean, he's come up with one, Counselor Bernard has, even Counselor McCabe has, and that's why I see, you know, the opportunity, so it's not squashed for the year. So that's just my follow-up on that, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yankoff. Counselor Duffey?
No, I'm fine.
Counselor McLeod, can you hear us?
Yes, I came to Your Worship, and I do have something to say.
Did you want to add something? Yes, go ahead.
I can't support it. It doesn't make sense for me to take high-volume traffic and put it on a side street. I think about Riverside Drive, and if actually Bishop Drive and Walker Drive, and all of them weren't able to, if they weren't business open, what kind of traffic would be generated on those side streets? So, you know, taking out a mature neighborhood and allowing that type of access onto it, doesn't make any sense to me. Truck traffic won't happen on Angus Drive. If you're a traffic trailer and they want to pull into Mills, what would be, slow down and try to get out of St. Peter's Road, or is it easier to go around the roundabout and win the back way? So you're going to see truck traffic. And the next one is McCray Drive. What happens if McCray, what are they doing with McCray? We haven't really talked much about that, but if by chance, if became a right way, a right turn only, you're going to have all the traffic of all its homes up your back heading toward Angus Drive. So we really need to, you know, we need to shut this down. Angus Drive should not be the support street that they're going to try and make to be. It's a neighborhood street, and it should remain. Thank you very much.
So Counselor McLeod, we're voting on the deferral. Okay?
Right.
Okay.
Right, so you're not voting, you haven't called for vote yet?
No, we haven't yet. Okay. Okay, question? And now it's on the deferral to go back to planning and revisit, correct? Question called? You want to say something there, Counselor McLeod?
Yeah, I think from the discussion, is that what we're saying? We want to defer this? Unless you're why you want to defer.
You want to leave the deferral on the floor, or do you want to take it off?
There's no, there's no argument to defer again. Council's spoken. We, as Counselor Yankoff just said, we understand. We think the flavor of this room is no, not on Angus. Okay, I think that's pretty clear. So the question is, is this should be punted back to the province, public works, plan, whatever it is, knowing full well that no to Angus, but can you find an alternate solution, which is maybe that fifth exit off the roundabout into Mills? If the answer's no, then we come back here next month with the same proposal we're looking at tonight, and I think we've got a pretty good consensus of where that's going to go. But at least given them an option, we talked about collaboration, we talked about working together, we talked about all those things. Here's an opportunity to do it, and I think this could be the remedy for safety, it could be the remedy for the residents, it could be the remedy for a lot of things. But if you're not going to give them the opportunity, then how are we going to know?
And I think, how, for Verne, what you had said earlier, and alluded to was, you're just saying no to this tonight. It doesn't need to be all commercial. Put an exit, and if that's the case, you don't need to defer. They can come back and say, well, you know what, we're not going on Angus anymore, so we think it's possible we can work for round over the fifth exit. So we looked, we don't need, if you don't need change in zoning, this doesn't sound like we do, then...
Yeah, if...
No, Alex, is that, is that correct, Alex?
Some of the problem on this property has to do with the, on the rezoning side of it, because you are moving those big trucks around, and somebody alluded to, maybe Counselor McLeod, about, you know, the right turn in, that the trucks might utilize it. The province has specifically designed that turn, so a big truck can't go through there, we can put a development agreement. But the concern of the applicant, the owner, is the ability to navigate these big trucks around internally there to get back out into the roundabout, because if the round, if you're driving the big truck that drops the fuel off, you have to get back out into that two lanes of traffic, get into the far lane, and then to go through the roundabout. So there's a lot of sort of things happening on this property related to the movement of trucks that I'm sure the applicant would prefer that it was zoned to commercial, but at any rate, I mean, I'm here to take whatever suggestions you may have to take back to whoever.
Counselor Verne?
Yeah, yeah, just going to follow up the same question.
Just quickly, quickly, then Counselor Twill.
The question we asked now, I'm sorry, was if we order against a rezoning, tonight, does the applicant still have the option to come back and propose a road through that property, or is it better to defer it?
I think you can give some guidance on that. If you tell me that you decide to vote on it tonight, but you say that you're willing to entertain an application, it's up to you on the one-year rule. That's a, you can bring that back if that's new information or something. That will be a decision of council to determine whether that's new information, if it's turned down, the one-year lockout type thing will be a decision of the Planning Board and council.
Counselor Twill, and then Counselor Yankoff.
I don't think I'm going to...
You're all in? Counselor Twill, let's end it up here, it's on the deferral. Just, thank you, Counselor.
Well, no, again, I heard, I heard the suggestions, I heard the arguments. It still doesn't negate the fact, we're dealing with proposed change in zoning on Angus Drive. So there's really no reason to defer. The residents want an answer. Residents have been through a lot, not just on this particular occasion, last number of weeks, last number of months, but every time, it keeps coming back. And once and for all, I think we have to put our minds at ease. I think we have to send a message out that we are listening, and that regardless of what takes place with that roundabout, whether we have another lane, we have five lanes, 15 lanes, it's not one impact and effect on the lifelong residents in Angus Drive that are good citizens, paying the taxes, made tremendous investments in their property, and they want that predictability when it comes to property value. They don't want, nor should they, have to experience in any which way, shape, or form, devaluation of their properties. So I still think you can explore the points that Counselor Verne brought up, but we need to vote on the...
On the isolation.
On the proposed zoning changes. Let's not lose sight of the issue. So I will be voting against the deferral.
Counselor Yankoff, Counselor Verne, do you want to leave the deferral on? Counselor Yankoff, can you go first?
Yeah, I'm just going to, I mean, as long as, as long as Mr. Forbes is sure that we're not squashing everything for future collaboration and communication, I think we all agree that access onto Angus is, doesn't seem to be the will of council, nor is it the will of mine. But I'm all about collaboration and follow-up. So as long as we're for sure that it's not squashing future communication, so to me, I'm happy to proceed to vote on the resolution that we had first, but as long as we know that we can continue on with other conversation, yeah.
Mr. Forbes has an answer for you.
I hope, I hope I have an answer. So I think, I don't, I don't have the provision right in front of me, but it alludes to the fact that an application cannot be reheard within a one-year period if it's the same application. Notwithstanding, if there's new information, it then kind of defers back to the Planning Board and to the council, and if the planning staff thought it was to the benefit of the whoever to bring it forward and not just repeating the same process, we would support that for Planning Board, and then they would send a recommendation to council.
Is that all right?
You folks are in there.
So deferral?
Tomato, tomato.
What's that?
I said tomato, tomato. As long as that option is there to come, as a possible solution, as a possible solution, then I'll aid, we're moving to defer it.
So we move, okay. Questions called?
Questions called.
Questions called, there, Counselor Twill. How many is in favor of the resolution?
What is going on?
The deferral's done. So the resolution that he read, Mr. Kelly, to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw for Angus Drive, how many are in favor of it? Please raise your hands.
We are. We are in favor.
Do you want to read the, the deferrals off the table?
The deferrals off the table.
The deferrals off the table.
All right, go ahead, go ahead.
So the resolution is...
I got it.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counselor McLeod?
Not in favor of the resolution.
Those against, please put up your hands. Eight to one, correct?
Yeah.
Hey, Counselor Twill? Can someone ask Mr. Duffey? He's eager.
I need to use for second, Your Worship.
Sure you can.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Want to get a glass of water or something?
I'm just going to say...
What's that there?
Go eat, ready.
It's going to take you down the elevator. Okay?
Your Worship, moved by Counselor Duffy, second by Counselor McCabe, that request to amend Appendix C, approve site-specific exemptions as per Section 3.11, site-specific exemptions of the zoning and development bylaw, to exempt 7 to 9 Ponell Street, PID 1105451, from Section 34.2 of the zoning and development bylaw, from the required permitted land uses as grand, on walkable streets, and create a new table, Appendix B, approved the site-specific exemptions for the official plan to exempt 7 to 9 Ponell Street, PID 1105451, from the designated permitted uses on a walkable street as per Section 4.2.3 Sub 2 of the official plan, in order to allow the residential dwelling units and office spaces on the ground floor abutting a walkable street, as well as other minor changes, rear driver access and garbage storage, as outlined in the planning report, be approved, subject to amending the existing development agreement, Your Worship.
I think this is fairly straightforward, Your Worship. It's been through a public meeting, and I think all the information's available.
Questions?
Questions called?
Questions called.
Do you understand the resolution, Counselor Duffy? And Counselor Twill?
Twill's in there.
Okay, all those in favor, please put up your hand. Counselor McLeod, yea or nay?
Yea.
Okay.
Your Worship, moved by Counselor Duffy, second by Counselor McCabe, that the request to amend Appendix C, approve site-specific exemptions as per Section 3.11, site-specific exemptions of the zoning and development bylaw, to exempt 199 Rapsin Street, PID 342790, from Section 30.2 regulations and permitted uses, and Section 30.3 bonus height and development standards in a downtown mixed-use neighborhood, DMUN zone, in order to allow a six-story, 84-unit apartment building with parking located within and under the building be approved, proceed to public consultation, Your Worship.
Questions called? So questions called, Counselor Duffy? Do you want to speak to it?
No, no, it's fine, it's fine.
All those in favor, please put up your hand. Counselor McLeod?
Yea.
Okay.
Your Worship, moved by Counselor Duffy, second by Counselor McCabe, that the proposed amendments to the zoning and development bylaw, PHZD dot 2, and official plan PH-OPA dot 1 pertaining to the sections as attached, be approved to process, sorry, to proceed to public consultation.
Okay, questions called? All those in favor, please put up your hand. Counselor McLeod, yea or nay?
In favor?
Your Worship, official plan PH-OPA dot 1, to adopt the official plan amendment, PHOPA dot 1 dash O21, the land uses for Angus Drive, that would be held back, correct, Alex?
I don't need that. Put that there.
Your Worship, official plan PHOPA dot 1, to adopt the official plan amendment, PHOPA dot 1 dash O22, to create Appendix B, approve site-specific exemption table for the official plan to exempt 7 to 9 Ponell Street, PID 1105451, from the designated walkable street as per Section 4.2.3 Sub 2, to permit residential dwelling units and office use on the ground floor along the designated walkable street, moved by Counselor Duffy, second by Counselor McCabe, that resolve that... that resolve that the official plan amendment, PH-OPA dot 1 dash O22 as pertains to 7 to 9 Ponnell Street, PID 1105451, is attached to be adopted.
Shall I carry? Counsel McLeod, shall I carry?
Yea.
Okay.
Worship, move by Counsel Duffy, second by Counsel McCabe, be resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw, PH dash 2 dot 2045, as pertains to 7 to 9 Ponnell Street, PID 1105451, is attached, be read a second, sorry, a first time, approved, and then it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, worship.
Shall it pass?
Shall it pass?
Counsel McLeod?
May worship.
Is that it for the report?
Yes, thank you, worship. Thank you.
Did you have a question there, Alex?
Can I just confirm that we did Resolution 5, the proposed zoning bylaw amendments? Did we read that into the record?
Oh, number five?
It's been written, yes. Okay. So that's fine, thank you.
That the proposed amendments to the zoning and development bylaw?
Yeah, yeah.
For the public consultation?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes. Thank you, Mr. Forbes. Okay, Counsel Duffy, as always, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I miss one. Would you give the first one?
Not yet.
Can I give him the first one? Not anymore. I have this one in my. Did you take the first one?
I'm in Kansas City also, I don't know where. You should go with him, Mitch. You should go with him. Come on.
Counsel Yankoff, would you like to give your report? No.
Thank you, worship.
Thank you.
The Human Resources Communication Administration Committee, we last met on April 6th. Minutes are included in your package. They'll also seem included in your package, first reading for a remuneration bylaw amendment, as well as first reading for the records retention and disposal schedule bylaw amendment. If you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them. Thank you.
Counsel Twill?
Recently, I brought the fact that the replacement for the chief of police was a decision that was made by city council. And I understand that there's a, I guess, a working committee that struck internally that will make that recommendation and make that determination as to who the next chief of police is. I know from being here for a number of years that we had city council's involvement with respect, with respect to who the next chief of police is. I do recall the chair of police at the time, George McDonald, and he was involved with the steering committee. And then I believe a recommendation was made from there to, to city council. So please take that back to your committee, to entertain that idea. Because if you look at the position of chief of police, we got to get it right. And with all due respect to the proposed committee as to who that's going to involve, if a decision's made and it's not the right decision, what happens then? So, and I'm not saying that's going to happen, but I think positions of this magnitude, city council has to be involved, okay? Has to be involved because your chief of police is the face of the police department. He plays a very important role. You know, you're the chief of police, your fire chief, they're the face of your city. They're the ones that people look towards for confidence, for direction, for all of those things. Reliability, all those things. And I think we need to go back and look at that and have council have those deliberations and discussions with regards to how the position of chief of police is going to be decided. Very, very important. Second point I'd like to bring up, Counsel Atlanta, is I think the time has come now for, with your department, meaning you take this into consideration, your committee, as to see how different departments in our city are connecting with the community. I would argue in some cases that there is a disconnect. I'm not trying to be critical, but there is. You know, there's frustrations in the community about, you know, how decisions are awry and who's making these decisions and how it impacts on a particular neighborhood or a community. And then we as elected officials, we have to hold the bag because, well, you know, senior manager of a department made a decision and it's hands-off. Because, well, it could be operational, it could be this, it could be that, whatever the case may be. And I hear, I hear the concerns from the community that it could be a safety issue, it could be a number of issues. And they're saying, you know, well, city council's not listening, or the councilor's not listening. When, in fact, the councilor is listening, but he's running up against a brick wall because the manager might say, no, there's nothing we can do, and that's the status quo. Even if there's a safety issue, a safety issue, a real, genuine safety issue, there's nothing we can do. I don't believe in that. I don't believe in that. We're here, we're here to work with senior administration and our CIL to come up with viable solutions so that our residents in our community will have the confidence that their concerns are not only being listened to, but acted upon. And in some cases, Counsel Atlanta, I don't believe that's happening. So please take that back to your committee and have those discussions. And I think we need to look at that exercise of connecting as opposed to having a disconnect.
Thank you very much. Counsel, Counsel Yankoff? Ready to hit?
Counsel Mitchell?
It's Counsel Twill.
So Counsel Twill, if I'm hearing you correctly, you would like me to take back to committee?
Yes.
How the different departments are connecting within our community?
Correct.
And how we could do a better job. Is that correct?
Not only we, but also senior administrations, administrators in the respective departments. Because in some cases, with all due respect, and I'm not trying to be critical, it's not happening.
Okay, and if I'm also hearing you correctly, you would also like for us to, for me to take back to committee the process to which we hired the chief of police, which I believe is in a bylaw or a process. So you would like me to take that back to committee to have another look at that process?
Please.
Okay. Counsel Ramsey, and then Counsel Bernard. Those are the two in the queue.
Thank you for your part, Counsel Yankoff. I just want to welcome since Robbie Doherty and Isaac McDonald to our comp staff and all that stuff. I don't know if it's ever been, we all got the emails on it. I believe Isaac started today, and Robbie started two weeks ago, three weeks ago. So I just wanted to do that.
Great addition. And who's our new economic development officer?
Steven Novak.
Steven Novak?
Right on.
Has arrived too. He's had quarantine, and I think Counsel McCabe met up with him. Anything else? Counsel Bernard, did you have a question?
Uh, could be. Any question?
Could be a comment.
But I commented when I heard Counsel Twill speaking, and that is, last year, I heard her about talking about the chief of police position.
Hiring the chief.
And that she said we should be involved in the hire, as in elected officials. Is that, is that what I heard?
Counsel Twill?
Yeah. Well, I point to parallel of Counsel Bernard's back. When we first hired the chief of police after Mount Eameson, chair of the police committee sat on the selections committee and was directly involved. He plays a critical role. You're the chair of the police committee and how that decision's going to be arrived at. So he's involved with the inception of the process. And then a recommendation comes from the selections committee to council. And then council eventually votes. Because it's a fairly important position, as you know. And I do think we need to be involved because your chief of police is not only the face of the police department, plays a very significant role in the city's cooperation as to, you know, all the major decisions that are made here in the city. And I want to make sure we get it right the first time.
Good sir.
I'm not sure that having elected officials involved, who's going to get hired, who's not, is a great way to do this. I think the chair will have an active MTA, he's very clear.
Yeah.
We deal with the CIL, and that is it. If you don't have your fingers in the pot, well, the manager of parks are actually very important to this, because they impact the community. The manager of water is very important to this. So we're going to get all elected officials involved, and we'll say who can hire. I think there's a process set up there, we put it in a bylaw, and I think the only one that we vote on is the CIL. And everybody else falls below it.
So Counsel Yankoff, you're going to take it back to the human resources standing committee, correct? Is that all right with you? She's going to take it back to get answers to?
I'm not sure if there's a bylaw.
Yeah, well, we'll find that out. Okay?
Counsel Bernard, it worked before.
Okay.
We did, the chief had just retired, it worked before. So that's why I bring it up.
We can't change the municipal government act unless we're on.
Yeah. We'll go through the review. Counsel Yankoff, just, I wasn't at the meeting. What's the update on the deputy chief administrative officer's position?
Worship, you asked a question that you.
I frequently, I frequently ask, yes.
So from what I, you know, can determine, from what's discussed lately, that is, the process is moving along, and I think the anticipation was that they should be in place by May.
Okay, okay. And Counsel, I just had this question asked to me by an employee. COVID-19 vaccinations are now being planned. Lori and I are going in May. Do we have anything in place for our employees? Like, if anyone goes to vote, we give them a three-hour window? Do we have anything in place for our employees getting the vaccinations? Because, look, this is very important, not only for our workforce, but the community in general. Could you look into that?
I will, and it's an excellent question, and you're not the first person to bring it up.
Right.
It's great. Right, I'll definitely take it back to committee as soon as opposed to later as we are progressing now with the vaccination.
Thank you, Counsel Yankoff. Okay.
Worship, to amend the City of Charlestown records retention and disposal schedule bylaw to replace the multi-page records retention schedule due to documented errors and omissions in the original schedule outlined in the records retention regulations of T E I, resolve that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown records retention and disposal bylaw be read a first time, moved by Counsel Yankoff, second by Counsel, sorry, Deputy Mayor Cody.
Shall I carry?
Carry.
Moved by Counsel Yankoff, second by Deputy Mayor Cody, that the bylaw now be approved as a city bylaw and that it be entitled the City of Charlestown records retention and disposal schedule bylaw, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council.
Shall I carry?
Carry.
Counsel McLeod, yea or nay?
Yea.
Thank you.
Worship, to amend the City of Charlestown remuneration bylaw to include the option of the tax-free savings account under benefits and severance section in Schedule A, resolve that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown remuneration bylaw be read a first time, moved by Counsel Yankoff, second by Counsel Cody, sorry, Deputy Mayor Cody.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Counsel McLeod? Nay. Nay?
Moved by Counsel Yankoff, second by Counsel Deputy Mayor Cody, that the bylaw now be approved, the city bylaw, and that it be entitled the City of Charlestown remuneration bylaw, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, worship.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Counsel McLeod?
Yea.
Counsel Dron?
Yea.
Is that it?
Worship.
Thank you very much. Protection. Counsel Reverend?
Chief Chair? Thank you, worship. Protective and emergency services, committee met on March 23rd, 2021. Minutes are in your package. There is one resolution for consideration tonight. If there's any questions, comments, I'll be happy to address. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Twill, you got a question?
Yeah. Thank you for your report, Counsel Rivera. My question may be, Chief Brad McCallum can help you with this. A concern I have, once again, is amount of drugs going around the streets of our city. Fentanyl, opiates, and other drugs that are ruining people's lives. And I see the progress that's being made with the neighbors in the Summerside area. And I just wanted to, once again, bring it to your attention that I'd like to see a real concerted effort to go after the drug trade and trying to set them back so that, again, it's not having a negative impact on people's lives, destroying families, destroying neighborhoods and communities. And it's a serious problem. So I want to bring it up again. That's Chief McCallum, and you know, you please respond, I'd greatly appreciate it. But I can tell you, it's a real concern in a number of neighborhoods and communities.
Counsel Rivera, do you want to yield to the chief, or do you have some words to say?
Well, thank you, Counsel Twill. I, everyone knows it's serious, and I think our police department is well aware of how serious drugs on the street are. I mean, you know, to ask, you know, the deputy to answer your question with regard to how important it is, I think is, I think is crazy. I think, I think the police department does an amazing job. And just because we don't see stuff every single day doesn't mean that the work that they're doing, the officers are doing, isn't, isn't important and critical. So I certainly don't expect the deputies to speak. I think they're doing a fantastic job, and I think the department will continue to do a great job addressing the drug use in Charlestown. So I don't think it's easy to answer that.
And that's your.
It would suggest that they're not doing a good job.
Yeah. Counsel Bernard, and then we'll come back to you, Counsel Twill. Oh, and Counsel Ramsey after, after.
I just wanted to say, worship, I had a couple of concerns. The number of wars over the last month. And Counsel Rivera, the police didn't respond right away, but what I was impressed with was that not only responded, and they emailed me back, told them they responded, told them what the issue was, how to resolve it. Which meant a lot to me, and I just wanted to give you a pass on it, thank you very much, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Ramsey?
Thank you, worship, and, oh, no, maybe we'll wait.
Is that police? What's that?
It's under the resolution, sorry.
Okay. Counsel Twill, your second question?
Yeah. I'm not sure how to respond to Counsel Rivera when he says, "Consider this crazy." The amount of drugs in our streets are crazy. That's not being critical, that's just being a fact. And our job is to bring the issues and concerns from our respective neighborhoods and communities, people that we represent, bring them forward. That's our job. So, again, I'll bring this, bring this issue forward like I bring another issue forward, whether it be speeding or drugs. Those are two main staples in our community that affect the neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods and communities are striving to be safe, to be secure neighborhoods, and not to have, you know, those illegal activities taking place that dramatically affects neighborhoods and communities. And I bring that forth because it's a very serious issue. And that's what we're mandated to do, bring forward the issues here. I will continue to do that, and again, I ask for a response.
Yeah. It has to go through the chair, chair members to yield? Do you wish to yield to the deputy, or do you wish to answer yourself?
The issue of drug use, safety, protection, all those things are paramount in the City of Charlestown.
Right.
This entrusted with the fine officers that put on their suits and uniforms every day and go up there and protect the residents of Charlestown to make sure that the quality of life that we have is the best possible life we can, we can enjoy. So they are, they are doing the absolute best. I know, I trust them fully.
Yeah.
So, again, I don't think, I don't think the deputy has to answer. I think they're doing an amazing job, compliments of the police department and the officers that, again, who will risk their lives every single day to make sure that our residents are safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel Dron?
Thank you, worship. Thank you, Counsel Bernard, for your report. Just a little bit of good news, I'm just wondering, in the recent budget, we did pass two, two new positions. And I'm just wondering of a bit of an update, or when would they be starting? When would the process happen? When, when could we expect them on the street? So I'm just, you know, curious to see when, when they'd be, when they'd start. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dron. It is great to see, but I think it's the first time that we've, we've added officers in the past, I don't know, ten years. So it's. that we've, we've added officers in the past, I don't know, ten years. So it's, it's good news for the department. I think, deputy, you were correct me, but I think you said something in the range of summer time, June, July, we're hoping to have two officers. But do you want to-
So, yeah, just an update, councillor Dron, on that. Certainly, we thank council for those positions, those monthly positions, and thank you for bearing on that. And yeah, I met with H R last week and advised them of the need to hold a competition for those positions to create a shortlist. And we're looking, we're looking to get those filled as, as soon as possible. We're heading into summer months. We are fortunate to be able to hire casuals on. But we're looking to get the competition going right away, create that shortlist that you're all from, to fill those positions.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, you have a res- oh, councillor Twill, you have one more question?
One more.
Okay.
I want to go back one more time. Councillor Dron asked a question about the drug trade in the city. And I'd like our paid professional to respond as to where we add a progress report. I don't believe it's an unreasonable question. In fact, I think it's a very reasonable question. That's what we're here for, to bring issues like that to the forefront. If it's a very serious issue in our city, I'm asking for a progress report.
Yeah.
Good point, Howard.
Point of origin.
Can you please, rules around here, where you're supposed to speak for no more than five minutes and no, no more than two appearances. Councillor Twill doesn't speak two.
Yeah.
He said three. So let's, look, can we not move on?
Yeah.
We will move on.
Take a resolution there, sir?
Yes, sir. Worship, moved by councillor Rivera, second by councillor Ramsey, that the public works manager be authorized to cut grass, remove any garbage and other material or debris, clean up and property disposers of same at the owner's expense at the following properties located at 601 to 603 Upper Queen Street, P I D. 740886, 56 to 50, sorry, 586 to 588 Upper Queen Street, P I D. 748376, 582 to 584 Upper Queen Street, P I D. 734913, 29 to 31 Passmore Street, P I D. Number 360826, and 37 to 39 Passmore Street, P I D. 360834, in accordance with the terms of the Dangerous Homes on Sunday bylaw of the City of Charlestown, worship.
Councillor Ramsey has a question.
Thank you, worship.
Or comment.
Oh, yes, it's a comment.
Yes.
I don't have much of questions. I thank councillor Rivera. I know, I sit on this committee, but I got a call last week from our bylaw officer, and him and I spent two hours going around and discussing everything and showing me, we get out, with everything on the bottom of our shoes from A to B. And it's just despicable, some of these places. And my question, then I met with their C A O, and I met, is there any other way that these people can be fined or anything along that line? Our bylaw officer does a great job, but you can put a sign on the front door all you want, a summons and all that stuff. But we all know, most of those people, they're rentals and they won't pay it. But is there a way that we can hit them right away? I know there's a lien against a property that's ever sold, but if I own the property, and I'm not going to sell it for 25 years, you know, the, and I'd like to ask councillor Rivera, if there's any way we can, I guess, hit them in the pot right away and say, okay, this place, we warrant you three times, which our bylaw officer does, and then they get $200 fine, but they never pay it half the way. I'm just wondering if there's any way we can just read that, you know, because we're dealing with the same properties in more than five, year after year after year. But I couldn't believe it when the bylaw officer and I spent two hours, we walked through the areas and everything, people, you would just open your eyes. Thank you.
Councillor Rivera, can you respond?
Thank you, worship. Thank you councillor Ramsey. Let's, let's take the information back. Our panel has it. We'll discuss it in the next, next committee meeting. And if there, there are some changes that would help, then we'll follow up at committee level and bring it back.
Thank you very much.
Okay, questions called. All those in favor? Can you raise your hands? Councillor McLeod, yea or nay?
Yea, yea.
Okay, got another one there, sir?
No, worship, that's right. There's just the one.
That's just the one.
Councillor, sorry, chief, fire chief Randy, no questions for you. You're doing a great job. Thank you very much. Please come back next month.
I'm not going always.
It's worth, okay.
Oh, there he is.
Oh, it's Praximar creation. Okay. Councillor Bernard, did you-
Worship. Thank you, worship. Worship, we're meeting that April 8th. And we're in our packets as usual. Any questions in the news, I'll do my best to answer. Worship, we have no resolutions for cast of consideration at this time. However, I do have a couple of issues I'd like to highlight, worship. One of them is staffs working on creating an online scheduling platform. Worship, for booking tennis courts at Victoria Park, the pub can be booked a court up to a day in advance, and the booking can be displayed online and at the court. So it should be more needed for the pub. And I believe Tennis P E I was agreeable for this too, worship. The other thing, worship, is, as you are aware, we had representatives in Charlestown Curling Club made a presentation to council. Worship, we're looking to form a partnership to keep Charlestown Curling Club in Charlestown.
Correct.
They're looking for assistance in finding a new location to build a new curling club, and the city has a funding, last management partner. With the I C I P funding stream, community culture and recreation, they could receive up to 73% funding. And they have, worship, as you heard the presentation, they have a significant amount of money put towards the projects themselves. So our committee looks forward to work with this group, worship, and we'll see where it goes. But it certainly looks popping so far.
Great news, sir. Great news.
Worship, the volunteer lot.
Okay.
As chair of Parks, Recreation and Leader Activities Committee, I'm pleased to announce that volunteer of the month for April is Stephanie Smell. She was nominated by the Fall Charlestown Skating Club Board Member. Stephanie had been an essential member of the Charlestown Skating Club since 2017. Stephanie has spent numerous amounts of hours volunteering at the rink and from her home. During her time at the club, Stephanie has volunteered as a junior coordinator, registrar, test chair, and currently now is president, sometimes holding a couple of positions at the same time. Busy, busy, busy lady. Stephanie is a big advocate for the skaters and is always trying to encourage them to skate to the best of their abilities. The club and its members are grateful to have Stephanie as their president, and they hope to have her for years to come, worship. So we congratulate Stephanie on her recognition, recognition as April's volunteer of the month. Worship, if anyone has any questions on the minute, if you want to ask this.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Councillor McCabe.
Thank you. Thank you for your report, councillor Bernard. I was just reading through the report, and it was, there was some discussion at the committee level around the tennis courts in Queen Elizabeth Hills Road Park and Frank McCauley, around possible pickleball ever happening in these courts. So the response was that the nets are too high for that. But we know that that's a growing sport. And I know tennis is important, too. Don't get me wrong. It's great to have so many opportunities to get out and play tennis. But would we ever be able to look at one of those as becoming a pickleball court?
Can you, councillor-
Oh, sorry.
Councillor Bernard.
Yeah, thank you.
He shared a line here.
What's that?
He shared a line here. We'll talk a little off. We did discuss that. The question was asked. I think what we're looking for is heavy demand for the tennis courts. There is demand now of all for pickleball. And pickleball is not the only sport that's growing. So we had a little bit of discussion on that. The city needs to kind of get ahead of this curve. I feel like we're falling behind in the number. A lot of new immigrants moving in, there's a lot of new sports. But at the end of the day, there is, for example, Gordy Griffin facility that we built, the Morgan Morgan Sports Facility, that can handle probably up to three pickleball courts. A lot of times, as you mentioned, they take their own nets there, smaller, lower nets. So we are looking at some other areas that we could use for pickleball. And, you know, we're discussing an overall plan to be comfortable to address a lot of those sports that are really growing. We don't have to be so concerned. Thank you.
Councillor Yankov, did you have a question?
No, I just had a comment.
Yes?
It is good news.
Good news.
And I had mentioned, meant to mention this to the chair of the committee when I was there. I was late that day, so I didn't. But one of the things I saw in Arizona was they took the tennis courts, and you know how the nets are up and they're higher? They have a way that whoever is in that court at that time can pull them and lower them, and it instantly just becomes pickleball. So I just wanted to point that out. I meant to mention that too.
Great.
Thank you.
So if it's in Arizona, we can bring it up here. Councillor Twill.
Yeah, me too. Thank you for your report, councillor Bernard. Look for an update that was committed maybe a year ago with respect to beach volleyball. And the department had looked at a location or locations, and all the people that are interested, participants that are interested in beach volleyball, would like to have that opportunity in our stadium. Just want to have a status report.
Thank you, councillor Twill. Yeah, that's just another sport that's growing and going in the facility for us. So that's part of the overall plan that we're looking at. We're hoping to be able to come up with a, a sport, what's the word we're looking for?
Sports management plan?
What?
Sports management plan?
No, sports, venue. Anyway, it's an area that we can have a lot of different sports at. We've been addressing a lot-
Multiplex.
Whether it's pickleball, whether it's soccer field, whether it's baseball down. So that's in discussion. It's going to take some time, but we are talking about that. And it's part of, it's part of the processes.
Okay. Any resolutions, Mr. Kelly?
No, worship.
Sports complex, I used the word.
Sports complex.
Sports complex.
Cody Banks, Sherwood Complex, Sports Complex.
Sports complex.
Okay.
Pickleball out there, too.
Yes, sir.
We could.
Thank you, Frank.
Yeah, true.
Thank you very much. So the next we have is water and sewer. Councillor, Bob Dron is your man here?
I hope so. I had a couple ideas today, so. The Water and Sewer Utility Committee met on March 28th, 2021, and the minister included in the package. I have a few good news stories, a couple of comments tonight, so stay with me.
Oh, yes, they do.
The residents of Charlestown should be proud of the efforts in the area of water conservation. Water conservation or consumption in 2020 was about 6 million, a little less than 6 million cubic meters. That is 1 million cubic meters less than the peak consumption in 2008. 7 million, around 200,000 cubic meters. So the last time the city saw water consumption levels under 6 million cubic meters was in 1997. So we've been doing a great job in conservation of water, and we appreciate that. Another good news story is the, yeah, the Charlestown Pollution Control Plant is now treating the wastewater from East Royalty and Stratford. The lagoons in East Royalty and Stratford are now being decommissioned and no longer discharge wastewater into the Hillsborough River. So that was a great news story. But so now there's a concern with my man, I guess he's not here. The Charlestown Pollution Control Plant continues to see an increase in the number of wipes being placed in to the, into the system. They plug up a number of the machines that are down there. So he was just asking residents to be reminded of these facts. Oils and greases should also be disposed of in compost. These materials will cause problems in our own plumbing, in your own house, and in the city's collection system as well. So there's many thanks to customers that have embraced water conservation and those that understand what should and should not be flushed into the system. If anyone has any questions, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Dron. Councillor Bernard, do you have a question?
Thank you, councillor Dron. I just wanted to reiterate what councillor Dron said about the water and the water withdrawal back. Because back from 1997, we get the same amount. And really, when you look at the population-
Yeah.
-of Charlestown's growth, it is a really good news story. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, councillor Dron. And I think that's really positive. When you think back over 20 years of growth, and we're using less water, we're making less.
And councillor Bernard, it counters what was said in the House a couple of weeks ago by the opposition, that we were drawing more water. And I know councillor Twill addressed it through a letter to the editor. But that's totally untrue. And in terms of increase in population, from 2008 to 2000, no, 2005 to 2016, we went up by 20%.
Wow.
So we're up to 40,500, right, Mr. Kelly?
Over 40.
So that's good.
You were the time, you were looking to do a third bucket. We had built one up on track, and you had a third one.
Yeah.
But there's been no need. And we're actually, we move up actually, you're only getting a 30% withdrawal, but you don't even get allowed from these licenses. With the river, being the only one that had one time, on your notice of driving period, you get close to allowing withdrawal. Help your car out a little, but not postal help.
Need to get a press release out on that, councillor Dron.
That'd be a good idea.
Yeah.
Probably.
Yes, I love the manager.
The manager came up with all these facts. He's doing a great job.
And what's that again?
Oh, councillor.
Thank you, mister Dron. We get a response. Speaking of the fire department, too, on Brexham Street, issue that was raised.
Okay, but that's under police. That was under police. Yeah.
Anything else, guys?
No, no resolutions?
No, worship.
Okay, councillor Dron, thank you very much. Economic development, is that linked?
No.
Oh, lip words.
Councillor McLeod, worship.
Councillor McLeod, do you want to lead the discussion, sir?
Thank you very much, worship. Public Works and Urban Brutal basically met on March 24th. The draft minutes are included in the package. As I said before, persons with disabilities also met on March 9th. My apologies for not having that in the, in the cover page there. We'll do our rest of the committee's clues moving forward. I have two resolutions anticipated to move forward. And any questions, we'll try to answer. Thank you.
Any questions? Councillor Twill.
Thank you for your report, councillor McLeod. As you can recall, a number of weeks ago, not many months ago, residents in the Walton Drive area had made concerns about trying to cross Allen Street to the north side of Allen Street. There's no, there's no venue there for pedestrian traffic. And it's very dangerous trying to cross that street. And some recommendations did come forward from the community that I thought were real good community, real good recommendations. And I'm hoping that the department will act upon those recommendations. And I, I do think there's also time to look at Allen Street from an engineering, engineering perspective, particularly from University Avenue. And we should also look at going straight through to St. Peters Road. Allen Street, Iverge, is the third busiest street in the City of Charlestown. It's east-west connector from the old City of Charlestown to the Queen Elizabeth Hospital, the C D P, Civic Center, people that will try to access St. Peters Road to go to Morrell, to go to St. Peters, as well as using Allen Street to commute to Stratford. So there's a major concern there from a pedestrian perspective. And I think we need to look at making some enhancements and improvements. The residents have raised the issue, and I know the department is aware of that. So I just wanted to put that on the radar, and hopefully we come back with an action plan for improving pedestrian access on Allen Street as a cross, crossover Walton Drive to the, to the north side of Allen Street. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Twill, for your, for your concern there on Allen Street. You're right, we are going to do a study on the whole Allen Street access point coming from the avenue and coming to by path on Brexham Road. So we certainly are in favor of hearing the residents and what they have to say, and that will be brought into the picture as we move forward with, with the overall plan of how we're going to attack Allen Street. But you're right, it is concerning, and it is on our agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Got two resolutions there, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, worship.
Would you like to read them?
Yes, worship. Moved by councillor McLeod, second by councillor Duffy, that as per the conditions of the public request for quotations for 2021 spring tree order, that the submission of Dutch Masters nurseries in the amount of $27,140 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, worship.
Question? Please raise your hand if you're in favor. Okay, and councillor McLeod, yea or nay?
Yea, yea.
Eight, zero.
Worship, moved by councillor McLeod, second by councillor Duffy, that as per the conditions of the requests for quotations for the 2021 urban forest master, sorry, management contract, that the submission of branch manager tree services for the boom truck rental with operator in the amount of $645 per hour plus all applicable taxes, removal stump grinding, $20 per hour plus all applicable taxes, and additional support at $980 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, worship.
Okay. Questions called.
Questions called.
All those in favor, please raise your hands. Councillor McLeod?
Yea, yea.
Thank you, sir. That's it?
Yes, worship. Yes, Worship.
Okay. Counselor McCain, economic development?
Sure, thank you.
Hi. How are you this evening?
So the Economic Development Tourism and Event Management Committee met on March 17th. The open draft minutes are included in your package. There are no resolutions for consideration, but I would like to take this opportunity to officially welcome our new economic development minister, or our officer, sorry, Stephen Novak, to our team. So Stephen began his role of corporation last week. A big congratulations to Music PEI for an outstanding Music PEI week. The city was a proud funding partner of this event. Staff participated last week in a big way in the Sport Tourism Canada Sport Event Conference. It was a large annual gathering of everyone connected to the 6.8 million sport tourism industry in Canada. A tremendous amount of work went into preparing for this conference over the past couple of months. Staff have also started to roll out our 2021 Sport Tourism Recovery Action Plan. It's been encouraging to see the recent announcements coming out of the Charlestown Airport with respect to returning air service for both Air Canada and WestJet, in addition to new service for Flare Airlines and Pal Airlines. Our events development officer has been participating on the Charlestown Airport Recovery Task Force over the past several months. Global Meeting Industry Day was last week, and a shout out to our partners at Meeting and Conventions PEI for all the work that they do in this market. Our events development officer will work with the Meeting and Convention PEI team on attraction missions and serves on their boards. As we all know, meetings and conventions contribute substantially to Charlestown's economy and to the industry. A plan is currently under development to... What?
Nothing, go ahead. Yeah, your voice right over all, sir.
Sorry, my ears are blocked.
We can hear you.
Okay.
Keep it going.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, now, that's kind of rude. A plan is currently under development to safely restart the meetings and conventions industry locally. I also had my, uh, an opportunity to attend my first board meeting of the Canadian Capital Cities Organization last month, and I'm really looking forward to the ongoing opportunity to learn from colleagues across the country and discuss topics that are impacting our capital cities. The Canadian Capital Cities Organization will host the inaugural, inaugural session in its new speaker series tomorrow afternoon entitled, Creating a Visitor Economy After COVID. And I think we need to have special thanks to our tourism officer, who served as one of the two leads from the CCCO and the development of this quarterly series. Thank you, I received an email today to remind you that you are invited to participate in this night tomorrow afternoon. And our own Wayne will be, uh, part of the panel for discussions, and it's looking at creating a visitor economy after COVID through the lens of recovering from COVID-19 exhaustion, sports tourism, and being a tourist in your own hometown. So I think it's going to be pretty, uh, it's pretty, uh, enlightening for people that have the opportunity to take a private at 4:30. You can register still, I believe, is that correct? Yes, so you can let Laurel know or respond to the email. Staff participated in Tourism PEI's industry forum and marketing launch, press play on Tourism 2021, and Festival and Events PEI's Starting the Road to Recovery question and answer with Dr. Morrison and Premier Kane. So, any questions? We'll do our best to answer, and I'll try to keep my voice low.
Any resolutions, sir?
No resolutions.
No resolutions, sir. One question there, Counselor Bernard?
Yeah.
Okay.
The 2023 Canada Winter Games Cultural Festival, they just looked, the council, they're looking for some permission to be, uh, people planning for 2023 Winter Games. They're looking for permission to grant it right away. Is there any kind of holdup on that, or has that stayed on track? It's looking to go right.
Do you want to yield to, or yield to Mr.?
That's okay.
Wayne, Wayne Lo?
Yeah, uh, Counselor Bernard, um, the Economic Development Tourism Event Committee discussed this particular item and authorized or opted, we should say, along with the planning committee. So it's now moving on to planning, and from there, they will, um, take it forward to their committee, and then eventually will come as a resolution to the floor here for this council to, um, endorse, hopefully, and move the process along.
Get something to add?
I do, I, 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 that's right.
Sorry, say that again?
You say you expect to come here for JILs, meetings?
I would hope so, that it comes in the near future. Obviously, the games are a couple of years out, but there's a huge amount of planning that needs to be done in advance, and some of those contracts need to be put in place now. So I have had ongoing dialogue with the manager of planning, and, um, I, I don't see any obstacles at this point. Eventually, we'll make its way to the floor here.
So there's no real hurry, we're, we're on track?
We're on track right now, yes.
Counselor McCain?
Sure, I, I should have also given a special shout out to the Confederation Center and Guild for, uh, announcing their summer festivals last week, and, uh, give them the cheers to be able to support stage production during public.
Good news, good news.
Good, there's pictures in the garden here.
That was a great photo. That bright dress.
Thank you, that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you, no resolutions, so we can move on to, thank you very much, Kane. Environment and Sustainability, Counselor Mitchell Twill.
Uh, it's my honor to bring forward the report for environment sustainability. I want to thank your little dog for putting together the, uh, the notes on the FTV. Monthly transit ridership from March 2021 was 33,742 compared to March 2020, when ridership was 42,923. Comparing March this year to last year shows that we are currently maintaining 79% of the ridership, monthly ridership from high school participants in the school transit project was 567. Applications are now being accepted for the city Charlestown Community Sustainability Micro Grant Program. This initiative provides up to 2,500 in funding to community-led projects that work towards the goals of the city's Integrated Community Sustainability Plan. Deadline for applications Friday, April 30th at four o'clock. City staff recently completed the 2020 corporate GHG emissions inventory for all city's facilities and street lighting. Due to the reduced operation of facilities during COVID-19 and the increased uptake of energy efficiency measures, in particular lead street lighting, the city's emissions dropped to 45% below the 2019 GHG. The largest emitting sector for the city is vehicles, 18.6%, followed by buildings. 18.4% moving forward transitioning the city's fleet to electric, electric vehicles as well as continuing to adopt energy and efficiency measures, and renewable energy generation will be very important to reduce the city's carbon footprint. This evening, a resolution is being presented to city council to release the 2020 Integrated Community Sustainability Plan Annual Report. This report highlights the progress made by the city towards the goals and actions of the ICSP in the last year, in the last year. Although COVID-19 presented many challenges, the city of Charlestown continues and still makes great progress towards our sustainability goals in many areas, including energy efficiency, active transportation, and waste reduction. Tonight, we will also bring forward first reading of the SWITCH bylaw, which is our pace enabling bylaw. This bylaw will allow the city to set up a financing program to allow our residents to avoid the barriers of upfront costs when it comes to energy retrofits in their homes as well as support the replacement of lead service pipes. A recent change to the MGA now allows municipalities to set up these bylaws in municipalities across Canada, and are using these bylaws to accelerate energy efficiency and renewable energies in their respective communities. That's, uh, my briefing notes, Worship, I'll do my best to answer the questions.
Okay. Counselor Bob Brown?
Thank you, Worship. Thank you for your report, Counselor Twill. Um, very informative. I'd just like to bring up, uh, an issue I, I had over the last number of months. You know, it's kind of ironic here that we passed a, a resolution a few minutes ago about a boom truck rental with operator and, uh, to help cut trees down. I have a longstanding business in, in my ward that I, that I represent, and, you know, there's, there's a problem. Uh, the tree that's on the city property has grown very large and is now blocking his sign. Um, I, I wrote the appropriate staff and, and the manager of the business and tried to facilitate a, uh, you know, an agreement. The, this business said, you know, we're going to plant extra trees, you know, we're willing to do that, but we, we need to, to take this sign, or to take this tree down so, so business people, like, driving by can see their sign. I didn't think it was a very, you know, large request, especially when the business, you know, offered to purchase trees. So I think it goes back to our tree bylaw, which is, which is under your, your committee, that, you know, we can't cut any tree, I mean, a tree is a tree. When it starts to impede business, um, and, and a business is willing to plant a couple of other trees, um, to, to make up for that green footprint. And, you know, I, I think there's something we could be, you know, we could look at that. You know, he even asked if we could trim it down, but we were told, no, we can't do that. So, you know, I'm a little frustrated on that, and I know, you know, an elderly lady also that, that lives in Ward 6, she had an issue with her branch, and there was a fine threatened that if she didn't cut it down, and she didn't have the, the wherewithal to, to go out and hire an expensive company to cut a branch down that went over her neighbor's yard. So, you know, in, in cases like this, you know, I don't think always, you know, a fine where we're, we're using the city's resources in getting police officers to issue fines on behalf of tree people that, that could possibly damage a tree, you know, is, is the right use of, of city resources. I mean, I know yourself, you talked about simply, you know, there's so many things that they could do. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to get into too much here. I just want to ask your committee to take a look at these fines that we've been giving out. Um, you know, they're very large fines, that if someone didn't put, uh, plastic around a tree or, or didn't do what they're supposed to do. And go back to, you know, a tree that's starting to hurt business when, you know, these businesses are, are going through the pandemic, their businesses have been reduced. If there's anything that the city could do to say, trim a tree, you know, to help with their business and plant two or three more new ones, I mean, that seems like a logical solution to me. So I, I just ask you to go back to your committee and sit down and maybe come back with a, you know, a something to the tree bylaw, I guess. You know, I, I was one of the first or one of, of this council to pass it and improvements on it, but I never thought that, you know, we're going in such a way to protect every tree that's within the city. You know, I, I think reason has to come into play as well. So if you could do that for me, that'd be great, thank you.
Counselor Twill?
Thank you, thank you, uh, Counselor Brown. I, I did have an opportunity to read some emails, and I understand, uh, the frustration, the frustration of constituents. Certainly, that's not our goal here, of our being objective, is to levy fines against lifelong residents or lifelong businesses. Uh, it's got to be a solution. Uh, I think that what we'll do is we'll put it on our committee's agenda for our next meeting. I want to personally invite you to come to the committee's, uh, meeting, so that, you know, we have your full input, uh, full collaboration. Uh, we want to come up with solutions, uh, work together and, and work to the betterment of our citizens. And of course, you know, we have a tree bylaw for a reason. We want to respect the, uh, you know, we want to respect the bylaw. At the same time, we, there's got to be a way that we can respect the bylaw and, and also respect the residents and, and see if we can come up with, uh, you know, a good, a good framework. So, you know, that, that's certainly not our intentions, is to issue heavy duty fines when it comes to trees. Uh, we want to, we want to maintain our tree stock, uh, when we do have a businessman, um, serving businessman in this city, uh, is willing to be a part of the solution if we want to kill trees. Uh, you know, I, I, I give the gentleman credit, I give him credit, but, uh, we, we will discuss it, and we'll see what, what possibilities, what the options are. And again, I want to thank you for bringing that up, and I want to personally invite you to our next committee meeting.
Thank you.
Counselor Yankoff?
Thank you for your report, Counselor Twill. Just to build on what, uh, Counselor John had said, the, I've had a few, um, calls from people trying to sell off, um, single, single residential lots for other people to build their homes on, and they're having a really hard time when the, uh, environment sustainability came out, and they show where they're planning to put their driveway, and it might be like small little shrubs this big, and they're kind of calling them trees, and they're being charged a hefty amount of money in order to have that, that spot, the, to have their driveway. And, um, if that could just be, um, talked about and to see if, because, you know, maybe common sense could prevail in some of those situations, that would be great. Thank you.
Counselor Twill, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Counselor Lana.
Yankoff?
I heard it was under all.
Thanks, Counselor Mitchell, okay, you want to answer? Want to answer? Yeah, do you want to answer? Let's answer.
You should stand.
Answer, answer the question.
Anyway, thank you, Counselor Lana. I, you know, you know, your points are all taken. Uh, we, we need to look at, uh, some of those discrepancies. Uh, I, I know, look, the staff are trying to do their very best in terms of, you know, protecting, uh, trees and, uh, all those amenities that were sitting spear in the bylaw, but as you said, usually, we're in common sense test for that. So, uh, once again, uh, I, I welcome, welcome your suggestions, your recommendations, and we, once again, we need to find a way to, uh, you know, make sure our staff's satisfied, but also make sure that our constituents are satisfied, especially when they want, want to make investments of that nature, too. I mean, you know, driveways are indispensable, too, getting access to their homes. So we'll, we'll look at that, and, and again, I, I welcome you to our committee meeting, be a part of the discussion.
She's, she's, but, 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 Counselor! Do you want to invite Mr. Kelly, Nate? Oh, but he goes anyways.
Mr. Kelly goes in. You're, you're, you're a.
Okay, resolution number one, resolution number one. Just, this is going to be expensive. Resolution number one.
Worship, just to clarify, uh, we have had technical difficulties, uh, with our phone line this evening. Counselor McLeod is no longer on, neither is, uh, Richard, Ramona, and Scott. Uh, so, uh, we will check into that, but I just want to be aware that they were on the line.
Hey, are you telling me Richard hung up?
Uh, no, it was, it was a disconnect.
Richard, I'm gonna bring it up to the next committee meeting.
Worship, moved by Counselor Twill, second by Counselor Bernard, whereas the city of Charlestown has made a commitment to sustainability through the development and implementation of the Integrated Community Sustainability Plan, the ICSP. And whereas the ICSP states that the, the annual review and report of progress toward the ICSP goals and actions will be completed each year. And whereas the city of Charlestown has made significant progress in the areas of energy efficiency, urban forest management, active transportation, and public education in 2020, therefore be resolved that the city of Charlestown release the attached 2020 ICSP annual report, Worship.
Okay. Any comments? Counselor Twill? Okay, question?
That's your call.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. And Counselor McLeod's not on, right?
No, Worship.
Go ahead, sir.
Worship, uh, to establish a bylaw which provides low interest financing to homeowners and business owners to invest in energy efficiency upgrades and renewable energy installations on qualifying properties within the city of Charlestown. Moved by Counselor Twill, so have we counted, Bernard, that the attached bylaw, City of Charlestown Switch Bylaw 2021, Switch 01, be read a first time, Worship?
Shall I carry it?
Yes. Worship, moved by Counselor Twill, so have we counted, Bernard, that the bylaw be now approved as the City of Charlestown, uh, bylaw, and that it be entitled the City of Charlestown Switch Bylaw 2021, Switch 01, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of Counselor Worship.
Counselor Twill, could I just ask, it, it's still in discussion, the money, low interest financing, how, how are we arranging that? Is, is that something the city's doing?
It's through the PACE program, Worship.
The what?
PACE program.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll get that information over to Counselor Worship.
Shall I, shall I pass?
Pass.
Worship?
Yes?
I have one other point.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'm very sad to learn about the news, my good friend, uh, former LA Ross Young. I vise to talk about Ross and my involvement with Ross since the early 1990s, when Ross came back to Prince Edward Island after being away. Uh, he was elected, uh, first king as the MLA, and at the same time, he made a substantial contribution, both as a football player, linebacker at Mount Elson University, and, uh, and as a coach at diversity level. And when Ross came back, I met with Ross, and I, I said to Ross, you know, we need a team down in Surrey, because at that time, it was a three-team league. down to Surrey, because at that time, it was a three-team league, and I impressed upon him that we would do the fundraising to raise the, raise the equipment for the kids so that players would have good, safe equipment and the, meet the Canadian standards. Without any hesitation whatsoever, Ross made a commitment, and we had a four-team league. He gave our league instant credibility, his leadership, his legacy, his contribution. One of the things I always admired about Ross is when he took an interest in his community. Not only did he coach the team, but he would take his players on a bus to Mount Alson to watch a varsity game. And he did that on a consistent, regular basis because he wanted his players to have an opportunity to see football played at that level. And I always admired him for that. His first year, his first team, first year in the league, they won the potato wall. And, you know, they won subsequent potato walls as the year went on. And we brought back the potato wall, which was the championship trophy for high school football. Of course, then he went on to become the head coach of Holland College, did a tremendous job there, great following. I was invited down when he would do the introductions of the players down at Holland College. And he was all-inclusive. He was great with the players, took a real interest in them, and always was concerned about their families and their well-being. And I can tell you, Prince Edward Island lost, lost a great man. And when I think of Ross, I think of my good friend Danny Redmond. We were all in it together when we started that campaign to bring tackle football back to PEI. And it's people like the Danny Redmonds and the Ross Youngs that played such an indispensable role. It's, it's very tiresome and very sad when I learned of my good friend Ross Young and he came passing away. And there's no words to describe it. We're losing a lot of good people here. We're losing a lot of good people, and I hope, I hope to get to see these two guys again someday because they made quite an impact in my life. And I miss them. I miss them dearly. Not Danny that goes by, I don't think, or Danny Redmond. So, anyway.
Counselor Twill, couldn't agree with you more, and I'd like to extend my sincere sympathies to Mary, his wife, and the kids. Big loss.
Big loss.
His father, Johnny Ross, was an MLA and a cabinet minister of the old Alex B. Campbell government. Good liberal.
Well, good people. Good people.
Counselor Ramsey, did you have something to say?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you, Counselor Twill, for that. Moving on. Next report, Strategic Priorities and Intergovernmental Cooperation. Counselor Kevin Ramsey, Ward 5.
Thank you, Your Worship, Ward 3. We met April 9th, and I apologize, the minutes are on your desk tonight, because we met May 5th, or Friday, if anyone, we didn't have time to look at minutes. The Affordable Housing Advisory Committee did not meet. The Youth Engagement Advisory Committee did not meet. But now that we have all those roles filled right now, we're hoping they're going to meet. They're probably going to meet quarterly, something like that, when court back. So we're going to go from there and hope it's a little better than it has, it has been. And I have the links in your package, and Mr. Kelly, I see there's one resolution.
No.
It's not there.
So that's been crossed out.
It's deferred.
Yeah, I was just trying to get your attention on that.
More information.
But anyone who has any questions, I'm willing to answer. Thank you very much.
Any questions to Counselor, Counselor Ramsey? It's a good report, sir, probably no questions. Okay. Finally, it's not. Depi, depi.
I think, Your Worship. No, hopefully. Our committee met a number of times since our last council meeting. The reports are in your package. There are three resolutions for council to consider here tonight, and if there's any questions or comments, I'll do a best to address them.
Okay. First resolution, any resolution?
Moved by Deputy Cody, seconded by Counselor Bernard, that the following resolution, as its attached background, or dated September 10th, 2018, be rescinded, and that the city of Cheryl Town accept the 69,009 square feet, 1.605 acres of land, 10% dedication as parkland for the McCray subdivision, trail drive extension as indicated in the proposed concept development plan attached, and that the planning department will enter into a development agreement with the developer, and further that the mayor and CEO have authorized to execute, sorry, to execute standard contract agreements to implement this resolution, Your Worship. So this is to rescind, Your Worship.
It's just to rescind?
Yes.
Questions called? Oh, did you, questions called? All in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, nine, zero.
Your Worship, moved by Deputy Cody, seconded by Counselor Bernard, that the city of Cheryl Town accepts the revised parkland dedication of 1.85 acres for the McCray subdivision as indicated on the attached proposed concept development plan, and that the planning and development enter into a development agreement with the developer, Your Worship.
Question? Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, nine, zero.
Your Worship, moved by Deputy Cody, seconded by Counselor Bernard, that the city of Cheryl Town accept cash in lieu of parkland in the amount of $3,800 for a three-lot subdivision off Malady Lane as outlined in the attached preliminary plan, and that these funds are to be credited to the Parkland Reserve, Your Worship.
Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine, zero. That's it? Okay. And I think it's, Counselor Spencer? Counselor Yankoff?
Thank you. The council's advisory committee met on March 29th, and we had a subsequent meeting to follow up on that to pass the nominations for the standing committee for the two of, there was three, and one, three, which fell under council, and they were fine. So I don't have any other new information to present. There's no resolutions for the city to reconsiderate. So if you do have any other additional questions, I'll do my best to answer. Thank you.
Guys, I think it's near the end. It is near the end. There's nothing else, unless there's something under your business? Anyways, I want to thank you again for your patience. A lot of great discussion in planning, and Counselor Duffy, thank you. Thank you for recognizing Ross Young, there, Counselor Twill, and Mary and the family. Thank you very much. And thank you. Post good jerk? All in favor? Thank you. Thanks, David.